Dr. Lake, do we have any changes to the agenda?
We do not.
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero. Next, we would do the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand if you're able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
4.0, Special Recognitions. We're taking June off for that. They'll be back in July or August.
Yes, it'll be July. The HR Central Office was supposed to be in June and people couldn't be here, so they're going to do it in July. Usually, we take July off, not June. We flip the months for you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So July, we can expect those. 5.0, Consent Resolutions. We have one consent resolution this evening. The Resolution Honoring the 2024 Graduating Class of Limburg High School. Do I have a motion to approve the consent resolution as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Jen, second by Matt. Questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero. 6.0, Citizen Communication. We did not have anyone sign up to speak with us, so we will move on to 7.0, Communications. Calendar of Events, Ms. Megan Vetter.
Thank you. Tomorrow, the district offices are closed in observance of the Juneteenth holiday. We have a special board meeting on Thursday, June 27th at 9:00 a.m. to discuss the budget. District offices will be closed on July 4th for Independence Day. Then, we're back here on July 18th for a board workshop and our regular Board of Education meeting. And as a reminder, district offices are closed on Fridays, every Friday through July.
Thank you. 7.02 is Report of Meetings. This is for board members to report out if there's any state or parent group meetings they attended. Anyone like to share?
I would like to share that on Saturday, June 1st, I completed my in-person training for new board members with the MSBA. And everyone up here probably already knows this, but for those of you watching, the state of Missouri requires all new board members to participate in 18 and 1/2 hours of training within their first year of being elected. 10 and 1/2 of those are done online in advance of the in-person training, and then the remaining eight are in-person. And some of the topics that we covered in person were school finance, long-range and annual planning, school law, school board policy, student achievement, board operations and relations. I thought the training was an amazing opportunity, and I actually would like more of it, is what I told them. So I know there is at least a one-hour requirement for us to renew every year as well. But I appreciate the opportunity to participate in that and learned quite a bit. Thanks.
Anybody else?
I attended the Governing Council Meeting for SSD to approve SSD's budget for next year. And I know we talked a little bit about it at our last meeting. Nothing has really changed. I did want to report, though, that I did speak to a few of the SSD board members just to get more information from them about how they're feeling about the process that's being put into place and they all seem to have great confidence in kind of what is ahead for SSD. And again, I know I said it last time, but to repeat, Dr. Macklin, the superintendent, is using the words "right the ship" quite often, and so they feel good about that direction that they're headed. So I will continue to update you on anything that comes about.
Excellent. Okay. 7.03, Announcements, Ms. Vetter.
We have one announcement, which is for our board advisory committees. Applications have been emailed to all Limburg families and are due on July 1st. So new advisory members will be notified this summer. So if you would like to take part in one of our board advisories, please apply.
7.04, Review of Upcoming Board of Education Meeting Agendas, Ms. Vetter.
The board will meet at 9:00 a.m. on Thursday, June 27th for a special board meeting. The main agenda item for this meeting is the 24-25 budget. We meet on Thursday, July 18th at 4:30 for a board workshop where we will hear the Student Growth and Achievement Report. Some of the regular Board of Education meeting's tentative agenda items are our regular business items, career and technical education program evaluation, transportation program evaluation, food service program evaluation, and central office is scheduled to be here for recognitions. As always, these meetings are open to the public, and we encourage everyone to attend.
Thank you. 7.05 is Board of Education Member Appointments. So each year, the Board of Education reviews committee assignments and the committee obligations that the board is responsible for have been reassigned for the next school year. A full list of these are on board docs. This is for informational purposes only. 7.06, MSBA Report.
... School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin with a look back at the legislative session that wrapped up last month. Education issues dominated headlines and talking points throughout this year's session. MSBA's Director of Outreach, Kaitlyn Whaley, says that this year's session was unusual from start to finish.
The 2024 Legislative Session was a bit odd, I think, to kind of sum it up. We started off with a lot of bills. A historic number of bills filed, thousands of bills. And both in the education realm and just overall, it became clear semi-early on that the number of bills actually passed was going to be very few. So specific to education, you saw that narrow down to Senate Bill 727 extremely quickly, and that became almost the entire focus of all the major education groups, was what was and was not in 727. And overall, just very few bills passed. I think, including the budget, it was like 49 bills, which is exceptionally low when you're starting from 5,000.
Kaitlyn says that with the passage of Senate Bill 727, there are now more issues that school board members will need to be aware of going into the next budget year and legislative session.
And we will be continuing to put out both policy and general guidance on what 727 means in practice and practicality. A lot of what is in 727 is budget-related, and so that is going to be a fight for next year, is to fight that you need to fund all of these additional mandates that we've put on school districts, the teacher salary increases. And you can't fund them at the expense of things like the foundation formula and transportation. We have to have that overall net increase in funding to keep it from being a huge local tax increase on our school districts.
And although the session is over, Kaitlyn says it's still important for board members and administrators to stay in touch with legislators and also noted the outstanding outreach efforts of school board members this past session.
I'm new to MSBA, but I was absolutely floored by the outpouring of support and enthusiasm for advocating on these issues. We had so many board members and districts step up and voice their opinions and concerns, do that outreach that we were asking of them, because I know Brant will say it, and I will say it, and Mike will say it. Legislators want to hear from people in their districts, and it's much more meaningful for them to have a conversation with somebody that lives in their area and represents their local school districts than it is for the MSBA advocacy team in Jefferson City. So your work was absolutely noticed. We got feedback from the governor's office that they were very impressed by the amount of outreach that they received. And so every time we conduct that outreach, we're laying groundwork that school board members are a trusted voice and a trusted advocate in public education, and we can continue to build that up as a resource going forward.
MSBA's positions on state and federal education issues are determined by the Delegate Assembly that will be meeting this coming October. If your school board has a position statement on an issue you would like to submit to the Advocacy Committee for consideration, you can do so this summer. The Advocacy Committee reviews those proposals and makes recommendations to the Delegate Assembly that determines MSBA's positions on these issues. Make your plans now to attend the 2024 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators and the Missouri Association of School Business Officials. The event will once again feature some outstanding general session speakers, along with a wide variety of concurrent sessions, many presented by school leaders from districts throughout the state. Registration information for the conference will be posted on the MSBA website soon. And past and present members of local school boards can be nominated for the 2024 Paul Morris Community Service Award. The award is for those who have shown an outstanding commitment to local community service. Nominations will be accepted through June 28th, and the award will be presented at the MSBA Annual Conference. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in July for the next MSBA Board Report.
Okay. Thank you so much. 8.0, Special Reports, Cabinet Updates. Looks like our cabinet is Joelle this evening.
The only report I have is the Finance Committee meeting, which happened last night. It's a little bit off schedule, so we had lower attendance, I think, because it was on a Monday night. But those who attended got a full hour and a half of fun data. This is a big... This board agenda is full of a lot of financial information and actions. So it was a good meeting. We discussed everything that was on here and a few other items. We did thank our committee members who are exiting. We have several that are ending their term and a student that has great attendance. It was Colin's son was one of our members, and he was always there and always had good questions and a smile on his face, so he will be missed. It was a good meeting.
8.02 is the Student Report, and our student is out of town. So she will return next month. 9.0, Action Items by Consent. We have action items by consent, 9.01 to 9.14. Does anyone wish to remove any of these items for individual consideration? Hearing none. Do we have a motion to approve consent items, 9.01 to 9.14?
So moved.
And a second by Jen. Any questions? Over any of the items? Comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion passes, seven to zero. We do want to point out that we had a public gift given to school this evening. I would like to take a moment to thank Ms. Tricia Sobery for her generous gift in honor of her son, Carson. 10.0, Individual Action Items. We have three individual action items this evening. 10.01 is Southwest Food Service Excellence, SFE, contract. To open discussion, do I have a motion to approve the School Food Service Management Contract with School Food Service Excellence, SFE, effective July 1st, 2024, with annual renewals through June 30th, 2029, based on performance to include an administrative fee of .096 cents, management fee of .042 cents, and a DESI set meal equivalent factor of $4.79 as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Julia and Megan, second. And our only cabinet, not our only cabinet, but Joelle.
This item is a regularly recurring item in June each year, but it's a little bit different this year because we did just come off of doing a RFP with a food service vendor for a five-year term. So the food service RFPs are really managed tightly by the state. We work with them on that process, and it does happen every five years. So the month before, you guys approved the vendor, and then this month, we just are approving their rates for this coming school year. So.
Any other questions for Joelle?
So I noticed that we did not select to be part of the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program. Was there...
Actually, our at-risk levels, our free reduced count, we aren't eligible.
Okay.
Yep. That's what it is. We get it all the time, and we wish we could be eligible for it, but...
Yeah, I'm encouraged about the farm-to-table initiative that's in there, so thank you for getting that.
Anybody else? Okay. We had a motion by Julia and a second by Megan. Now, we will vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero. 10.02, Resolution Authorizing the Issuance of $55 million of General Obligation Bonds. To open discussion, do I have a motion to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the issuance, sale, and delivery of not to exceed $55 million principal amount of general obligation bonds? As such resolution is prepared and presented to the board and the documents and the exhibits and the forms attached to such resolution as presented?
So moved.
Jen, second.
Second.
Megan? We have Joelle, as well as Jason Terry.
And Todd Goffey is the other one, I think. I don't know if she put his name on there. Todd. Todd Goffey is from Piper Sanders, and Jason is from Gilmore Bell. And I'm going to ask them to do a brief, very brief summary of what this item means.
Wonderful.
I'm Todd, and this is Jason. Maybe just a brief overview on the plan of financing, and then Jason is the attorney and can answer any questions on the resolution. So first of all, congratulations on your April bond election. I know there's a lot of work and effort that goes into that, so great job. You've got a good streak going now on successful elections. This $55 million is the first piece of the $150 million. The plan of finance that we've got laid out would contemplate another $75 million that would be used for project cost. That would be done late in 2025. And then the third and final piece would be $20 million that would be issued in honor about December of 2026, and that would be the portion of the bond proceeds that would be used to refinance a prior COP issue. So that's all refinancing that would not really be project cost. So for now, with the $55 million, the plan is to do a competitive sell on July 9th. So that's coming up soon. We had a rating call last week on that. Joelle does a fabulous job with S&amp;P, as you would imagine, always very well-prepared. We expect to have that rating next week. And then, working with Jason, we'll finalize some of the bond documents and get those out into the market ahead of that sell. And then we'll get to July 23rd, and that will be the day when the bond proceeds will get wired in. So that's kind of the process. I'll be quiet and see if Jason has questions or some thoughts on the resolution.
Good evening. The resolution approves the terms of the bonds. As Todd mentioned, the bonds won't be sold until July 9th. And so this is what we call a parameters resolution. So assuming that on July 9th, the bonds are sold within the parameters approved, then the authorization of the board is giving authorization for the bond sale to move forward. And otherwise, the bond resolution is very much like the district's other bond resolutions. Some of you may have seen them, some of you may have not. From the 2020 was the last time? 2019? COVID was in there, so I get a pass. So again, the bond resolution controls all the bond terms. And but the interest rates and the final maturity schedule won't be set until the bonds are actually sold on July 9th. And the way that'll work is July 9th, the bids will be opened. It's all done electronically. The lowest interest rate, what we call the true interest cost, will be the winner of your bonds. And so we don't know who that is. It could be anyone, anywhere, that's eligible to bid. But the good news is that at a competitive sale, you'll have the lowest interest rate on that day that you can get. But it won't be known until July 9th. Are there any questions?
I have a question. What happens... So the parameters are not less than 109.5% or more than 111.5% of the original principal amount. What if you can't get that? What happens?
Then we don't have authorization to move forward.
So then it has to come back next month?
The parameters are... I'm sorry.
So it would fail, it wouldn't get it, and it'd have to come back the next month for a vote again?
In order to have a bond sale, we would have to come back to the board and get authorization for different parameters. And the reason for that is the board is authorizing borrowing $55 million, and you're doing that beforehand. You know, the sale won't occur until July 9th. So the parameters are somewhat narrowly drawn. As a... The alternative is very wide parameter as well. Are you... You know, is there a question of delegating your authority at that point? And so... But that said, working with Todd, those parameters are what will be shown to the marketplace. So they'll know, okay, we can bid, but we have to fall within these parameters. So there's something called a Notice of Bond Sale. It is one of the documents included in the board package. All potential bidders will get that. And so they'll know on July 9th, I have to bid between, you know, 109 and 111. I can't bid more than $55 million. That's all they're authorized to do. Optional redemption can't be later than 10 years, or it might be less.
It's 10.
10 years.
Yes, it's the parameter.
And so the bidders know the parameters. They will know that when we will post or publish or print that Notice of Bond Sale when we get that bond rating. And so bidders will have time to digest the parameters. And on July 9th, they'll know going in. And I still suspect you'll... I hate to say... We'll get plenty of bidders. Can I say that?
Sure.
Yeah, they're going to get plenty of them.
He said it. It's done.
I did. But remember, the attorney said it. He doesn't know anything about finance. I should let Todd say that.
I think on the parameter, you... You know, we control that through the Notice of Sell, and so we'll get that. So there is no concern there. The parameter where we provide you some cushion is on the true interest cost, what we refer to as the TIC. It's set at 5 and 1/4. If you were selling the bonds today, it's probably going to be 4 and 1/4 to 4.4%. So that's where there's a little bit of cushion. But if something really kind of wacky happened in the market and that TIC is now above 5 and 1/4, we don't have your authorization to proceed forward. So we'd have to come back to you, say, here's what's gone on in the market. I mean, it would be a catastrophic-type event to see the market fall off that quickly. So we're comfortable. We think you'll have a very low cost of funds, kind of in that 4 and 1/4, 4.4% range. The parameter is also a 10-year par call. We're able, in the current market, to do better than that. And so we've got it set up for an eight-year par call. So at your option, you would have the ability in eight years to come back and refinance or restructure the bonds if the board so chose.
Okay.
So we're looking at a July 23 payout of that. Does that align well with all of our planning so far? And if that gets bumped for some reason, if the market does go crazy and catastrophic and we have to push it, is anything at risk?
Yeah, we would just push the whole thing. I mean, if something like that happened. But yes, Joelle and Todd, we've laid all out what we need to do.
We're still on good track, though. Okay. Thank you.
And Joelle, in our finance meeting last night, said that if anyone was interested in watching the sale, that you could come up July 9th. I don't know. I don't remember what time it was you said.
10:00 a.m.
10:00 a.m.
Yeah.
So if anybody's interested, you can come watch.
It is. It's kind of... If you've not done it, because they come in and there's... Yeah. The last time we did it, we had multiple, multiple bids, so...
Megan, we think it's exciting that not everybody's...
Temper your excitement. It's hitting refresh on a computer. And then you have bids.
Well, Joelle, Todd, and I will be sitting in that room if anyone wants to join us, so...
And I think I read in there, doesn't it say that the sale ends at 10:30? Does it only last a half an hour?
Oh, then it's 10:30.
It's... I'd have to look. I thought we had it set up. I don't have the Notice of Sell with me, but I thought it was 10. But it could be 10:30.
Okay.
But it really happens about five minutes ahead of the sell date, and then it's over. So you don't want to be... You don't want to show up at 10:31. You want to be there at 10:29.
So I guess technically, could they bid, once it's posted? Could they bid anytime before? That's not practically what happens. What practically happens is at 10:29, the banks will bid. And so to say that there's an open period, is it... When does it technically open? When we post it on parity?
Yeah, I mean, we'll... I mean, we should have anywhere from six to 12 responses, is what we're typically seeing. And there will be some underwriters that will have their bids up there maybe 30 minutes ahead of time. We can't see the details of the bid, but we know it's there. And then, literally at the time of the sell, as Jason says, we hit, click the button, and it'll reveal all the results. And we'll see, it'll line it up from the lowest true interest cost to the highest, and we'll see right away who the winning bidder is.
Very cool. Okay. Any other questions that we have? No?
Thank you both.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you. We appreciate it. So we had a motion by Jen, a second by Megan. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes, seven to zero. You may sell some bonds. 10.03, Intent to Use Construction Management at Risk, CMAR. To open discussion, do I have a motion to disclose the intent to use the construction management at-risk method for various projects related to the April 2024 No-Tax Rate Increase Bond Proposition? Motion?
So moved.
Second.
Rachel? And Andy, for a second? I think it's back to you, Joelle.
Yes, it's... Construction management at risk shouldn't be a foreign word to this board. They're very familiar with it. Our first toe into this bidding process, our construction process, was with the Gifted Center that we kind of used as a pilot because it was a small project. These projects, to use the CMAR delivery method, it has to exceed $3 million. As you know, we're doing Long, Kennelley, Truman, Farmers Club, and Crestwood.
Yeah, the three elementaries, Truman and Farmers Club.
So that has already been approved.
You've already secured the...
Yep.
BSI is the contractor there.
We secured that early in the process, which was advantageous because we got to work with the construction and the architect at the same time. And as you know, with the Crestwood project just coming off a bid, we saw success in having a below-budget bid on those processes. So to us, the CMAR method works, which is everybody starting upfront, being on the same page when the specs go out, and getting good results. So looking at that, the sparing project is... I think we have $8 million budgeted for that, but...
I think it's 10.
Is it 10? Did I move it? It's 10? I can't remember.
I think it's 10.
And that scope falls within that process for CMAR, so we're going to go down that path again. You guys, at this meeting, the board approving an intent to use it is the first step. And then the next... Between now and the next probably board meeting, we'll get an RFP out and hopefully have qualifications to share with the board. So, Dr. Lake, do you want to make any mention on this?
No. I just... I think we feel like it allows us to plan and maximize the taxpayer dollars because we know going in, we have a guaranteed price. And so as you saw, the change orders doing a hard-bid situation at the high school versus the change orders when we did the Gifted Center. Because you... Like Joelle said, putting the architect and the contractor in the room while you're doing the plans, designing, and doing construction documents, they understand, the contractor understands, what the architect means in those plans and what that's really supposed to. So it allows them to really do the cost estimation, really. And the people we've been working with on these have been spot-on, so with their cost, when we've done the CMAR.
And they represent us and our desire on cost on the project. And, you know, so they know if they put really expensive panels up, that may look beautiful. It's like, well, that's not in our budget. And so it doesn't always have to be me saying, how much does that cost? We have a contractor there that's saying, that's going to cost a lot.
Yep.
And so it's very helpful as we plan.
Any questions from the board? I've seen in the news where a couple of places... I've seen in the news where a couple of places in the, out in the community are doing the C A M R.
Yep, I think Valley Park is doing that, and I know Lodi has done it. It's become a more popular method.
I want to say somewhere in the city was going to. Leader again, Dr. Lake, leader again. So we had a motion by Rachel and a second by Andrew, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Seven to zero, passes. Eleven point zero reports, we have none for this evening. So 12.0 is recess. We've already conducted our executive session, so there's no need for us to recess. So we will move to 14.0 adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn board meeting 1598?
So moved.
Second. Megan? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes seven to zero. Board meeting 1598 is adjourned.